I guess I don't have to say kind of one stand for the pledge since we're all standing.
The anticipation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. A pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call the meeting to where? It's seven o'clock. Christine, can you, oh, I'm sorry, wait, hold on a second. Can I get an approval or can I get a move on approval of the minutes from April twentieth meeting? And also the meeting for April twenty-fifth, which was the special meeting for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget.
We both agreed with the mayor.
Thank you, Lance, thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents, now vote for Christine.
Okay. A draft copy of the meeting minutes from the April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the village board, a draft copy of the April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three reorganization meeting, and a draft copy of the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three special meeting on fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget has been distributed. We received Bank of New York Mellon statements for the weeks of April seventeenth and April twenty-fourth. The annual drinking water quality report was received by the village clerk on May fourth from Deputy Deputy Superintendent Water Operator Frank Galantino, Jr. And now we will send out the, we'll put it online and send out the postcards so people know that it's available. The fire call history report for March two thousand twenty-three and the fire call history report for April two thousand twenty-three have been completed by the deputy clerk fire secretary. The federal nine forty-one quarterly tax return and New York State forty-five quarterly tax return have been submitted by the village accountant. The county sales tax for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three was received on April twenty-first in the amount of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, which is up four point six nine percent from the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. So that's good news since we were concerned about that with our dip in our census. Advice to proceed with the water, proceed with award for bid for the route two eleven water management project has been received from the Boonhausen Exelon Meningering, and that was distributed to all of the board members, mayor, and village attorney. Gross revenue surcharge payments have been received from Locust, Time Warner Cable Info Services, LLC, XO Communications, and Vonage. And there was one charter communications program change date of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. That's all I have.
Thank you, Christine. Jim, one amount, hope you missed your last meeting, but.
A couple of things.
I know you're on vacation. I'll add that part.
No, work.
Work, it was not work.
We, be in addition to our employee handbook regarding bank hours. Regarding, basically, you have to use them at the end of the year. No more carry them over per year after year. Change that. And also, we're looking into a social media portion, but that has not been finalized yet. We also have to schedule our annual sexual harassment course for the town employees. So that will be coming out soon with evening nights and day courses to take. Also, we had two resignations of police officers, Officer Cantino and Mazella resigned. Be done by May twelfth. And then we also, last thing we have is two things. We got our bid came in for the old police car. We got a copy, two hundred dollars for that. And we are looking for applicants still for the director position for summer rec and counselors. Hopefully, we can get that going this year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Attorney's report. Worry, I know we're not gonna have much because there wasn't much of a meeting last time, but welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I hope this feels more family-like. That's kind of why I moved it. I kind of spun the table around the other night and.
I came in, the table was in a different spot. He cut his hair off.
That's it, that's it. A lot of changes going on in Roseville, absolutely.
New terms, so I get it. But I appreciate the opportunity. I thanked you last time, so that's all I got for today.
That's fine. Thank you, Bert.
Yeah, thank you.
Frank?
I just got a couple of things. John's got the rest though. Two thousand twenty-two annual drinking water quality report, I made the changes to the report. It was approved by the Orange County Health Department, gave a copy to Christine. She's the correspondent. Bulk trash pickup is going well. We're about eighty percent done.
All right, me and Brian been talking. We talked a few meetings ago about the no parking signs down the ball field. What was the decision? Anybody, I don't think we got to talk about a workshop, but it never seemed to go anywhere.
I don't think we've had a workshop since then, probably.
Explain what you're talking about. I don't have a.
Was it that January thing?
Yeah, the part I was gonna try to eliminate was parking along the field side for children sneaking out to go help assist getting balls. So that way, there's a clear line of sight. So we wanted to kind of make it so that you can't park in front of the sponsorship signs. Just so that, A, it'll eliminate kids running out on scene, and, two, the foul ball situation falls into cars and damaging windshields.
Did we talk to the town at all or have a conversation with them about, since it is their road, I would imagine, I just want to make sure if we put no parking signs there that they're actually enforceable. That might be a concern. It's great to put a sign there, but I'm just saying, just a thought.
I know where we're going. We talked to Jimmy.
They approached us and asked if we could do that.
Oh, all right, I did, okay, okay.
And it's not really parking on the road. It's parking on the grass.
That's the thing, yeah.
We were gonna mount the fence and just.
All right, so if you guys talked about it, how do you all, everyone in the grants, we need signs. I mean, this sounds like an easy thing to, okay, let's, let's order them up.
We got motion, we need motion.
I think it was already approved by the town.
John, we're gonna put on that fence and put on poles. We gotta put on legit. Let's put on legit, put no parking signs.
Well, I'll talk to you. Traditional, I mean, the fact, see how many people think, because we don't have enough posts right now.
What's part of this act that the fence is gonna be legit to put a man, I'm gonna be can.
Do we have any plastic barriers, like, on the cut over road? Do we have a lot of them?
No.
No, okay. I'm just thinking, I would, yeah, all right.
We'll be cleaning up around the village from the winter. We're mowing when we can in between the raindrops. We went to a safety class for flagging, so we knew that the state requires that all your people be trained in flagging. So we took me, Frank, and we took the two full-time guys and our part-time guys that would be doing a flagging to the class. It was at the town walkshow last week. I've been working on some quotes for the playground equipment down at the park and picnic tables. The swing set, I was wondering if, how you wanted to go about it. The one I was looking at is gonna be four swings, two swings for big kids and two swings on each side of it for infants. And then I also got a price for a handicap swing that we could put on the existing swing set that we have already. The swing set itself will be eighteen hundred and nineteen dollars. And the handicap swing is six hundred and sixty-six. But the other swings all come with purchase of the swing set. Now, I also got plenty of mats to put underneath them if we wanted to, and they're a hundred and four dollars a piece. We would need six, like, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. I didn't know how you wanna, you wanna get the mats or you wanna hold off on the mats and just fill the swing set this year and the handicaps.
Listen, I don't wanna hold off on anything. I'd like to see that park booming with people.
All right, so I'll get pre-priced quotes on the swing set, the mats, and the handicaps.
Bring it back next meeting.
Yeah, that's right. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page before I go on crazy with all these pre-priced quotes.
I'll ask everyone, like, we'll just go around here. How do you guys feel about it?
I've been wanting to do it for a while.
Bob, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, just the mats, what are the mats for?
They keep, they go underneath the swings. They keep the kids from digging.
Digging.
They're rubber heavy-duty rubber mats.
Would these, I'm sorry, no, okay, yes.
No, go ahead, I'll wait.
So the rubber mulch can get very pricey, and that's why I was gonna.
I got, just so you know, I got a price for just to fill in our whole playground area with rubber mulch warrant to stick would be eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
I got the price just to see what it would cost, like.
Would these rubber mats, I got a call tonight while I was here a little bit before the meeting from someone who was at the playground, which I talked to Frank and I actually talked to you two about, John. Would these mats make sense to put at the end of the current slides?
Yes.
So they're not digging down in the dirt and there's not a draw, okay, okay.
I can get the order, yeah.
Okay. Listen, just a phone, because this was coincidentally a phone call tonight, and it was someone down in the park that called me while I was sitting here eating dinner tonight. Table you were eating at.
Then picnic tables. Our picnic tables are getting old, beginning to rough shape. I got some prices on the metal ones, similar to what the ones that have down the town. For the six-foot tables, I'm gonna get green, same color scheme down there. They're eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars a piece. And I was gonna get two of them and one of handicap eight footer. Those have access for wheelchairs on each end. And that one would be nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, that's in eighty-five cents. Also, we talked about a new sign board down there at the end, and that would be eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So if we got them, three, three picnic tables and the sign board would be four thousand three hundred and six, not fifty-six dollars. That's with shipping.
Now, have you talked with Christine? Because I have no idea off the top of my head what the line item.
That would be, we had this year ten thousand dollars in parks.
So you would want to get an extra, three out of June budget?
But I wanted, it's gonna take four to six weeks to get the stuff, so I wanted to get the ball at home, so. But I get the final quotes for next meeting. I just wanted to see how we wanna receive that.
Bring it back next meeting, yeah, let's.
Yeah. Only other thing, we also working with Sway Hill Shed to get a school storage shed down at the wellhouse. He's gonna be getting back to me on a rough finished price on that, and then we go from there. And then next week, weather permitting, when we get that in the trash, we're gonna concentrate on park down there, tearing out the old base of the train, adding some new wood chips, because we just got some wood chips donated to us, and putting the tarps and stuff on the playground.
Okay, awesome. I am gonna talk about this, I'm gonna wait till my part, but Frank, I know you got a call, and I also made a call in reference to the bridge, that none of us know what's going on with the bridge. When's the bridge gonna happen? Is the bridge gonna happen? So I'll add what I found out, and then we'll talk about, I guess, we'll talk about what we did. Okay, so I made a call to Ryan Maguire of the county, because one of the first things on their list was to find out what's going on with this bridge. Even being on the town side, like, we haven't had updates as far as what's going on. So because the project was so delayed, it had to go out for rebid. And I'm just gonna briefly read this, what he basically wrote to me. So it went out for rebid. The bids came back in, and they opened the bids up on April twelfth. The lowest bidder was notified that he got the project, and this project is supposed to happen mid-May, this month, to the end of May is their project. Their first step would be doing that bypass road. As soon as the bypass road is done and open, we'll close the bridge, and then construction will start. My number one concern, besides the fire department and obviously the response to that, my number one concern is downtown businesses. I wanna make sure that there is nothing in their way or path to get to some of these businesses. I actually handed everyone out a liaison sheet list, which I'm gonna explain a little bit. I actually made two people liaisons to small businesses, but I didn't really explain why. This is the reason why. I wanna make sure that they're notified what's happening, how long the project's gonna take. So any information we get, I'm hoping we can at least notify some of the downtown people as far as projects go. I also put it on there just as a side note, when we have a Little League event or we have a parade, a lot of the businesses, since they don't live here and they just kind of work here, I guess you could say, are own businesses here, they don't know that certain events are going on. So I would like to have some sort of relationship with the village between two of you, which would be Brian Latimer and Diane. That's what I'd like to work on, the relationship between small businesses. But the bridge is a concern. Everyone that I've talked about, they've had no updates. I probably had a half-hour conversation with Kevin in the hardware store. He's very concerned that they're not gonna block him in or block the parking lot. I know the county is looking to stage some stuff, which Frank, I know they talked to you about. I will call Ryan again tomorrow, and we have to figure out a place that's gonna work for both of us, and that's not gonna affect any parking, any business interruption downtown, because it's on my list. But what did the conversation that you guys have? You were reached out to also, what did they?
I was reached out from the contractor, and what they're looking for is a place to put a trailer and some equipment. They were hoping to do it down by the stores, by the parking lot down there.
I figured, I knew this was coming.
I told him I'm gonna talk to you. I'll bring it up. I said, we have a board meeting tonight. I'll bring it up, and we'll discuss it, and we'll get back to you.
I'm concerned if we put a trailer, I'm just gonna talk to everyone about it. I'm concerned if we put a trailer anywhere down there, that construction vehicles are gonna block. I know the number one concern is gonna be the hardware store, because that's what they're gonna block. I know he talked about putting an entrance in the back of the building instead of having it in the front while this construction's going on, which I think he has to, but I'm concerned for him. So tomorrow, I am gonna be here for lunch, hopefully, and I will call Ryan, and then I'm gonna get with you, Frank, and we'll figure something out. I honestly, just thinking out loud, I don't, I know, Brian, you had said behind, behind mix-up there, but I'm just concerned of where we would put this, that other construction vehicle would be blocking it. I would love for you to have them use the county garage. I mean, it's right down the road. It's not ideal, but it's the county garage. They could park whatever they want there. We don't have a lot of room. I guess we'll talk to him and see what happens, okay.
It's a town garage, right down the road, too.
Thank you for offering. Yeah, because, okay, I mean, listen, thank you, do what we will. I gave him an update of what I got the other day, so he kind of knows what's going on. We both got emails about it, too, after the fact, but I just wanna make sure we're all, and I'm sure he'll bring it up at your meeting, but I let him know what I know, and obviously, he'll let me know if he finds something out different. Ryan, if you remember that name, Ryan Maguire, Jim, he used to be, he used to be the engineer for the time, I hope, and then he got a job for the county, so there's already a little relationship there, and he answers anything that I've ever called him and asked, so I was glad to see it was handled, but thank you. I'll reach out and find out. Thanks, Frank, thanks.
Brian, I have two questions on this, so anything like that that you receive, you'll forward to Brian and I if you want us to be.
Oh, no, no, absolutely, absolutely. Listen, this was, let me just tell you what this email is. This was an email from Ryan Maguire after we spoke. This was just a follow-up, Brian, you have any questions? My one number, one question was where are they going to stage some of this stuff? And two was, my second question was drainage off of the bridge, where's it gonna go? Because I already know there's a water problem down there. I talked to Kevin, he informed me, so obviously. But those are my two big questions, but now staging, obviously, has already come up on Frank's end, so interestingly enough, we'll find out. And as soon as I do find out, absolutely. All of us will be in the loop on that email, yes, yes.
The second thing, though, and Christine would know this probably better than I. During the purchase of the property, wasn't there an easement agreement that they were entitled to use certain sections of that during the construction?
There is, so there might be certain spots in there where that was already taken into consideration, because they paid us, they paid us not a lot of money, but they have paid us, I think, about two thousand, two or three thousand dollars to have an easement. And I, there's probably a map. I can look for that tomorrow to see where that, if that easement is a specific area.
Well, if that's the case, then we're just gonna, that's fine. Obviously, we gotta do what we gotta do, but I just wanna let them know what's going on, that's all.
I'm also gonna change the numbers, too. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, sorry about keeping you. Let me get somewhere else. Fire chief report.
All right, calls for the month of April, we had fifteen, seven medical, one automatic alarm, one structured fire, four mutual aid, one wire's down, one MVA, and we had four drills for the month. Truck company operations, ground ladders, hose line advancement, and a maze drill. The ladder truck, we're still waiting to find, find out about the parts, and I quote, haven't received anything. May fourteenth, we're having our Mother's Day pancake breakfast. If we could get that on the sign, and then everybody else who wants to come, and that's it. Any questions very well?
What time is the pancake breakfast?
Usual, eight to twelve.
Is someone from the fire department gonna make up a flyer? Who usually does that?
She, yeah, she'll put it on her Facebook.
Soon as they get it, we'll share it.
Okay, all right.
All I wanna add is I got to attend your annual inspection dinner and dance this, I think, back on four twenty-two. I got to swear in some of the officers, including you, so it was a good experience for me. Thank you. Food was delicious.
It was good time.
It was like Frank Flintstone food, right? The meat was kind of crazy, but thank you for that.
Thanks, Thomas.
I'll hang our picture that we took together earlier, so, okay, all right. What do we got next? Diane, we'll start with you.
This chairperson wasn't able to get the door unlocked. Apparently, the lock has been sticking. So they had a meeting on Tuesday night, but since they had no applicants who were gonna be seen that evening, they held a brief meeting right there in the parking lot. They approved the minutes from the prior meeting, and they really need to be applauded for being so resourceful and dedicated and not just going home. So I applaud Maureen in particular, but all of the members. She did notify the mayor, who in turn notified me, and said that he would have it looked better.
Did I notify Frank right before you?
We should read it.
And I actually, let me say this, I came up here right after she called me, because I was coming up here anyway to work on these flags, and it sticks. My key has always stuck. But I said to Maureen, I said, Maureen, you've been in that building a lot more than I ever have, let alone using the key, and my key sticks, but it absolutely worked better tonight, yes, yes. You can tell in your first twist.
I did send the new CBA and planning board secretary copies of all the locally created electronic forms that we have for those two boards to make sure that she had them all. And she thanked me, and I copied those to the chairpersons as well, so that they have what they need. Local laws, at our quick ten-minute meeting that we had, I did give everyone a copy of the draft for the firefighter's real property tax exemption law. I haven't gotten any feedback from the board members, so I was assuming that meant everybody was good with it. I don't know, did Rory get a copy of it?
Yeah.
So are we at a point where we wanna set a public hearing on that, or we're still due to?
I did not compare the towns that they wrote and the one that I saw that had come from you. Is there differences between the two at all?
In the wording, but not in the content. I did attach a copy of this and I sent it to you.
I read the one you sent, but I didn't read the other one, I'll be honest, okay, so.
So you wanna wait to set them up?
No, 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 I don't, I don't wanna wait. You guys wanna wait?
Rory, did you find anything? Did you?
I did not see anything. I didn't, I didn't compare them word for word, but I didn't see anything.
I mean, listen, I think this is a great thing, and listen, the faster we do this, the better in my mind, so I don't wanna wait, yeah, I don't wanna wait. Let's set a public hearing for it, and let's get it done.
When do you wanna do that?
Well, the eighteenth, we're gonna go over the procurement policy, and we're also gonna have Audit New York here. So what is the next meeting after the eighteenth?
June, June one.
Okay, so can we do June one? Does that work for everyone? All right. Now, hold on. I do not wanna set a public hearing up for six-thirty. I wanna set a public hearing up for seven o'clock on the dot. And my reasoning behind this is the last public hearing that we had that I walked into, it lasted three minutes, and we started the meeting. Now, I know Jim wasn't here the last meeting, but I don't wanna put on Facebook and on the website that our meetings start at seven and have someone walk in here at seven o'clock, and we're almost done with the meeting. So seven o'clock, I wanna start the public hearing. I can't imagine it's gonna last long. I hope the fire department shows up to show their support, but seven o'clock.
So you want a motion?
Yes.
Motion to set the public hearing on the proposed firefighter's real property exemption law to be held June first at seven o'clock.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Diane, for the work.
I made the motion.
Right.
Ball.
And that's gonna be at seven PM on the first of June.
First, yes, yeah, we'll do it first then.
Okay, community advisory board, we're tentatively set to have a meeting June the sixth at the federal correctional institution. This will be the first we've been able to meet in a year, so we're hoping to get back on track and be able to have quarterly meetings. With that, and praying nothing happens to get it canceled in between, if anyone has any issues or concerns that they wanna address with either the federal or the state correctional administrators, let us know. And you can let me know, you can let Jim know, whoever, and we will be sure that they give it, okay? Please do, thank you. Streetlights, Christine and I talked earlier. She's working on getting O N R to have me put on the account so that I can track the averages and have access to the portal to put in when lights are out. One question about the park improvements. I know John's been working hard on this, and it really sounds like you've done a great job of researching. My only comment is, is before we actually go ahead and order all of this, is the Parks Committee gonna be able to be involved in any way? Out of respect for them, I think they have a meeting coming up pretty soon, but am I correct?
They have one on this, next Thursday.
So if Lance had all the information to present to them as to what, you know, the board is looking at, I can't imagine they would have any objection, but.
I just wanna say this, even if they have an objection, this is the voting board. I kind of differ a little bit of what the Parks Committee is actually going to vote on and going to do. I am gonna be at that meeting, and I'm gonna explain that, but at the end of the day, this is the voting board. We're the ones that make the decisions, especially the park. So if John and Frank are recommending something, we're gonna be the ones to make the decision. I will take input from the Parks Committee, but I want them to understand, if they say we want new swing sets, and none of us say we're getting a new swing set, and that's, we're gonna be the voting member. I'm gonna be at that meeting on the eleventh. It should be an exciting meeting by the sounds of it, but I will personally talk to them.
Okay, well, just so you know, they've never been a voting board. It's always been this board. They would vote to determine what they want to, to convince us to vote for, but it was always this board's decision, not theirs.
Got it. I think the Parks Committee is gonna find it very easy to work with this current board. That's all I'm gonna say, and we'll find out.
I do, too. I do, too. The only other thing I have has to do with, I wrote it down as community comments, because I didn't know what else to call it. Couple of people, I guess more people are watching our meetings, which is a really nice thing. But I've had several people making comments, and the two that came up more than once was, could we have the speakers stand somewhere that they can be more easily seen and heard? I know the town has, you know, a podium. The only place I could think of would be like right here. But that, because what they said is with the way the room is configured, they can't see people at all, and it makes it very difficult to hear as well, so I said I would pass that along. And the other comment, and I got, I got calls, actually, from two different people wanting to know why the camera isn't turned off when the board goes into executive session until, you know, we come back into session. And I didn't have an answer for that. I said, all I can tell you is that the town does it that way. They leave it running. But they felt that it was unfair to the people who were waiting, because they're having private conversations, which is then going out to anybody who wants to hear it.
Hundred percent. Listen, I've always said this, you ever wanna know town gossip, listen to the town board meetings while we go in.
Yeah.
The camera is left on, so it can't be tampered with. It can't be, it's a meeting. Technically, the meeting, even though we're in executive session, is still going on, and that's why it's recorded all the way through. So if we have to say at the beginning of our meetings, if we have to go into executive session and watch what you're saying, please watch what you're saying. Don't talk about your neighbors, whatever else we have to say. But that's why that camera is on. It's for the purpose of, it can't be, in no way, shape, or form can it be, you know, tampered with, you know, certain things taken out. This is an open government meeting. All of it will be recorded. That's the reason why. It's always been like that at the town, and it will be like that, I guess, for the village. So please, watch what you say if you're in here. If you wanna have a private conversation, go outside. We'll let you back in.
I think if, and the people I spoke to, I think if we just did that, when we went into executive session to tell people, you know, just be aware of the fact that the recording is continuing. Because without telling them that, I'm not quite sure, you know, where we are.
I will say that I write comments online, and the audio quality is phenomenal. If you go outside that door and have a conversation, it probably will pick up a little bit of the conversation, not the whole thing for the record, but it is very sensitive, the microphone on this camcorder. And I've read people's comments that it's a lot better, it's a lot wider, it sees all of us. I have no problem with people coming up and standing over here. As a matter of fact, when I turn this thing on, it's all of the flags that are on there, so that probably gives a little bit of leeway as far as where you can stand, but thank you. All right, what do you got?
Not much. One thing, Christine, do we have any updates on my proposed agent advisory, either way?
I do.
I just, I just wanted to know, because.
You're in the loop. You will be in.
We had stopped. We had, um, stopped because, um, with our attorney, because Diane put up for the bylaws, we want to make sure that the village would not be liable in any type of their bylaws. So, um, they, a lot of the bylaws they had, um, in the village of Otisville, in the village of Otisville. We want to make sure that it's just for them and we're just going to be.
I have it right here.
Okay. The other thing I have on the Parks Committee, we're going to meet on May eleventh at six P M. at the Veterans Park on the, the. I'm going to send out an agenda probably a day before, um, what I am going to do, of course, the feedback from, um, the committee. And if any, um.
What time is that?
Six. The flower committee, they want to, last one. But, um, it really be like, it's where we get the park up and still running. Ideas, there's ideas. One of the things going to be about the drone, we talked about it, but we really never pushed the issue because, um, we started talking about electronic at the workshop, electronic vehicles. So somebody with an electric car could not play the electric car there. So we have to act, actually make sure we deal with the flying of, of the drone and, um, not just electronic, um, vehicle. Which would be, uh, little cars, electric stuff. That's about it. That's all I have right now.
So certain people don't want kids to go to the park and use their little remote control cars?
No, um, a drone was flying around one day and hit one of the new trees and damn it, they flew underneath the, so, um.
Flying, flying.
Yeah, why would, why would the person have the drone on it there? I don't know. Two trees on that thing. I got a couple of them. Park not the place for them. Not that park.
Just to tell you this, I had a meeting last night with, uh, the town of Mount Hope about this advisory committee. And I know tonight's going to be the first night that everyone finds out about it, but, um, I did take steps, not as far as anything voting on, but I did take steps to do this as a joint effort between the town and the village. That's why I had a conversation with the town supervisor. But I am going to talk about that in my report.
Okay.
And, yeah.
For the Parks Committee, is burger field part of that?
Yes, yes, it is.
I'm just curious because I have to get some picnic tables up there too. Some people said those Uber. I wasn't sure if it was part of that.
No, 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 that's, that's all part of the park. I mean, most of the stuff that you guys do there, the Little League take care of during the year. I mean, John will make sure the fields are up there, but you guys do, we do the cutting and a lot of maintenance you guys do for the games. So we have done very little as far as that. So for, and the fairs at the end of the year will make sure that that's what it was, but, um.
I was just curious.
Same thing with the clay, I mean, everything been changing. We get a little more excellent for parks, so everything be a, be a plus. All right. Not saying it wasn't plus before, um, we did, we did forget about you. Me and him talk every day.
What do you got, Brian?
Uh, very little. I just want to thank everybody for, uh, April twenty-second. That was the Little League, uh, opening day. Awesome turnout. Thank you for the voters having us step off as usual. Uh, fire department, they left. It was absolutely awesome. Mr. Klaus, thank you very much for throwing out the first pitch.
Thank you guys. It was very nice. I missed you.
Rory, it was the sixty-fifth anniversary of Little League up here.
Oh, cool.
And Bob Klaus happened to be on the original team here.
It was a pretty cool, pretty cool day. So, uh, just wanted to thank everybody for being in attendance. So ever since then, it's been a little chaotic with Mother Nature, but we've been getting games in here and there. Um, that's side's point. Um, I did meet with the Firehouse at their last meeting. Uh, I think it was Monday or Tuesday night. Went over a few things. There's a generator outback that we need to try and get ballards around.
I have them. They're on our list.
Oh, you guys are doing it?
Yeah, we got them. We ordered them last year.
Oh, okay.
And they came in the wintertime and we just haven't got it.
Okay. I thought that was ketchup fence. I didn't know you guys were doing it.
We were looking.
Oh, okay.
We ordered.
We ordered two ketchup.
Okay. All right, cool. Um, and then we started going over, Tony was asking about trying to start the process with the pavilion and stuff. Um, we're going to meet in a week to start game planning for that. I guess the grant stuff has moved forward for them. So they're going to start that pavilion project up there. Um, they did ask, uh, relay a message about a air conditioner in the window, if that could come out. I guess there's something collapsing underneath it and they just want to seal it up. I'll get more information from Tony.
So we'll send a picture.
Send a picture, yeah. They also had a blood drive last night. I, apparently it was very successful. A lot of people turned out to around the, but. And as far as the bank racks, I'm still waiting for that to be completed so I can do more of that.
Lee was here this week. She, she completed the regular bank racks, but she has not done the I class yet, so she'll probably do that on Tuesday. Or she's coming, third, next Thursday. I'll have her do it and then I'll let you know.
Okay. She's putting pressure on me to get it done, so. But, um, but that's it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Brian. Bob, what do you have?
Uh, a couple of things. Um, the old school community center, if you notice, they moved the model train from the park up to the old school. They're planning on rehabbing it and, uh, probably putting it along the fence on, up by the corner of school and orchard so it's visible for anybody who goes by. So that's going to look nice. Uh, the planning board, uh, had a short meeting. They approved, uh, John Wilbur's application for the old Methodist church and they approved the old school community center's, uh, condition reuse application. I went to my first town board meeting, my D. It was a lot of fun. Looking forward to going to the rest of them, except the cool nights of the winter, now of course myself. Basically, I think we want to concentrate on those meetings on intermunicipal issues, right? Another, try to read every little detail that's going on, but, you know.
If you want every little detail, watch the video.
Yeah. Uh, and the water, on the twenty-fourth, Christine and John and I had a conversation with, uh, some people from the environment facilities corporation. And, um, apparently, uh, it's not quite what we're looking for. Is that, would that be fair, Christine, to say that?
Well, we're still going to, if, if we went with any of their options, it would still have to come up with quite a bit of, uh, money on our side because they were all really like forty, sixteen, matching grants and things like that. Or low interest loans, that kind of thing, so.
So what we're thinking is, uh, we consider, plus you have, um, your contact who you want to talk to us about.
It's on my list.
It's on your list? All right. So, uh, we'll talk about that then.
One thing that they did say that you could get a one hundred percent grant for, which we might want to look into because I know we need this, is an inventory for the copper and lead services, right? So we might want to look into that.
That's good.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. I'll, I'll start off with the Little League part. I think it was pretty awesome how you guys got together up there. They got some photos of everyone, uh, at the ceremony. I think it's great that Little League is growing, growing, growing. How many kids this year?
At the time of the ceremony, we had two hundred and forty-one and then we had two more sign up after, bringing the S O two forty-three.
Awesome. Awesome.
That's really good.
I think it worked out great. No junk in the streets for pictures this time when we were marching, so that was awesome. I know you guys worked on that this week. I'll just start off, uh, on the twenty-second, which happened to be that day. We went down to Veterans Park for Earth Day. And I know it was a last minute thing, so thank you to Christine, thank you to Kate, and thank you to Lance for getting this tree, um, delivered. Thank you to the highway department for getting it over to its spot and making us look good once we picked it up, put it in the hole. Lance at one point, which I didn't get a photo of, literally was in the hole. It was, it was out, but, uh, that was good.
Did you fall on him?
No, he was in there. He was in there for a reason. He was in there for a reason. But I, I, I think it went great. We had some people from the public come. The town board came, Jim included, and, uh, I think it was a good event.
It doesn't waste every rain after we planted it.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yes. Um, so thank you to all involved in getting that done. Um, I know it was a last minute thing, but, uh, I know we talked about last board meeting, which I'm going to bring up too, that we did something, the board and the village did something for, um, Earth Day for the kids over at, uh, Otisville Elementary. And, uh, I just thought it was, if we're promoting Earth Day to the kids, that we should have done an event ourselves, which was good. Hopefully next Thursday, we'll get a couple more trees and get new stuff too. So thank you to all involved with that. Uh, Little League, need I say anymore? It was a great event. I'm glad we kind of all got together, uh, the village and the town. We marched and did our thing and everyone got a little bit of time to speak. So thank you to Brian for all of that and all the volunteers and everything that it takes to get involved because I think a lot of people don't understand that. It was probably a huge thing to put together. Um, I had a meeting on, I'll skip right down to, we did the annual, uh, Otisville Fire Company, um, twenty, twenty-three annual inspection dinner that night. So Saturday, the twenty-second was busy between plenary, the parade, the ceremony, and then the dinner that night. It was a busy, busy Saturday. On the twenty-fifth of April, which was right before our special meeting to pass our budget, um, I had a meeting with a company called Delaware Engineering. Uh, I invited, uh, Frank and John, and I know Bob that you couldn't make it to that one, but, uh, I just want to talk a little bit about what we kind of talked about. In a newspaper article that was written while I was running for office, um, another mayor from another municipality, uh, had reached out to me in reference to a company that he had, um, brought on, and I'll tell you what it is, the village agreement league. Um, they had major water problems. They were able to bring this company on, talk to them a little bit, and they got a three million dollar grant to upgrade their water system. They did have to pay money out themselves, but they were able to do it. And I didn't ask him how the drinking water was, but I have to assume after three million, four, whatever it was, that it has to be pretty good. But, uh, um, they got some information from you guys, which obviously you guys that are on, running the show down there. Um, I know I got a call from John and he's coming back Tuesday to talk to Christine. Tuesday next week to talk to Christine in reference to getting a little bit more information. Interesting story about Delaware Engineering. They have worked with other, uh, state prisons, uh, who service municipalities, uh, I'm sorry, who municipalities service water and vice versa. Um, I was kind of excited about it. I'm curious to see how it plays out. Again, we didn't hire them. They basically came up here to have a meeting with us. They're basically looking for some information. When that information comes in, I hope it's some great information. It will be presented to the board and then we'll obviously discuss it more in detail. So I don't really have much more than that. Uh, they didn't reach out to either one of you email wise yet.
No.
I would imagine they'll reach out to Christine Tuesday because the guy's coming here, get information and then we'll go from there.
Fine. If I could just add something. The town negotiations currently work with them as well.
I learned that.
Connect with you.
I'm sorry. I learned that from them and I'm sorry I didn't mention that.
No, no, it's just, it's, it's something for more information and certainly there's a jail in the oceans.
How's the water in the ocean? Is it good?
No.
Are they, or what do they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good. No, listen, I was excited about it. Again, um, Jesse Dwyer, I'll mention his name.
Sure.
Uh, he had contacted me. He had a whole long drawn out conversation and I found it interesting because he is running for town supervisor in Warwick. And, uh, he's just like, listen, I think I have something to offer you and maybe you have something to offer me. He went from the village, is hoping to go to the town. Obviously, um, vice versa. So, uh, good relationship there and I, I thank Jesse publicly for it, but I'm glad he brought them up and I think it went well. So let's see how it goes in the future. And thank you guys for coming to that. Um, summer concert series. I know we talked about last meeting. Uh, I did the eight weeks on our Facebook page. I kind of grabbed some pictures. I know Jim that I've shared to the town page after. I know a flyer is coming out very soon. Hopefully this week we'll get it out. And, uh, that starts July fourth for anyone interested. It's obviously every Tuesday. It's eight weeks long. And it's going to end this year with a little, uh, family comedy, uh, which would be August twenty-second is the last day for that, so. The dump truck that was over here on the bypass. Um, I know Diane had talked to me about it. Um, I actually, I know Mike's not here tonight, but hopefully he'll make our next meeting. So I'd like to thank him, which I texted him Monday night during your meeting, Jim, to thank him. Uh, we found out who owns it. Uh, the vehicle was ticketed for being parked somewhere where it shouldn't have been and the owner was contacted. It's gone. So I guess now there's going to be no issue with that bypass road. On four twenty-eight, that, by the way, that happened on four twenty-seven. That was taken care of. So on four twenty-eight, which was Friday last week, I was invited to Otisville Elementary. They had a little Earth Day celebration. Uh, I did post pictures that I had taken myself. I had asked, because I know sometimes there's issues with taking pictures of kids, especially when they're not my own kids. Um, and then obviously I followed up with pictures that the school had posted and we posted it to our Facebook page. So I would like to, um, read north to each one of you. Again, this was done before I got here. I kind of walked into it. I think I was talking to Christine about this the other day. It was one of the first things put on my plate. Do we want to do it again? One hundred percent. We want to do it next year. I hope to grow it. I hope to get Mount Hope involved in it. Um, and do something a little bit bigger and better as far as do stuff out. Uh, I think it's been a great event. I think it was a great event. All the kids. It was interesting that, and I don't have it here. I took it out, but they took these big coloring sheets and some of them kind of cut out, made, oh, okay. Made headbands out of them. It was, it was, it was a cute thing, so. I'd like to thank Principal Downey for inviting me and also Brian Monahan was there and, uh, it was a good event. I'd like to congratulate, uh, village resident Mason Hane on his Eagle Scout project. Uh, posted some pictures that, uh, he did his Eagle Scout project up at the Mount Hope Senior Center. Uh, he did a flagpole, which I saw last night. He put his name up and on, so that was good. But, uh, now there's flagpoles at the youth center and senior center up there, so it looks good. Congratulations, Mason. Friday, May twenty-sixth, to make sure I have this date right. Um, Orange County just introduced the beginning of April, um, what they're calling a mobile DMV van. The mobile DMV van, for those that have watched it, drives around to different municipalities, different areas. And you can basically do anything that you could do with DMV on there. You can get an I D. You can get, um, your driver's license renewed. You can do, renew your, uh, registration. But May twenty-sixth, um, the village and the town again, I talked to Supervisor Howell about this. We're going to do a joint effort to advertise this, but it's actually going to come to this building. Uh, it will be in our parking lot on Friday, the twenty-sixth from ten thirty, uh, A M. to three thirty P M. You go to lunch for an hour, which I believe will be on the advertisement when I get together. What I'd like to do with this, um, and Diane, you're part of this too, as in for the seniors, what I'd like to do with this is, um, I reached out to a councilman already about handing them out down in Devon's Gate, but I'd like to get it out to all the seniors. I don't want to see the bus come here. I'd like to get it here once a month, but I don't want to see the bus come here and be unsuccessful. Um, I found a little detail out. They went to Greenville. There was five transactions. That's great, but that's not success to me. So I want to advertise this. That's kind of why I pushed it to the twenty-sixth. I want to advertise it. I want to make some flyers and I want to get it out to people between, uh, the V F W. We can contact them, the seniors, and, uh, whoever else might be interested. Maybe we put flyers in local businesses if they want to do it. But the goal for this is to get it here once a month. Again, the county's been pushing it. Kelly S. knew the, uh, the county clerk, um, is proud of this and rightly so. She should be, and I think it's going to be a good thing to have you there. But I think if it's here on a monthly basis and we know when it's coming, I think it will be more successful, so.
What's the time, Jim?
Ten, ten thirty A M. to three thirty P M.
And you don't have to be, you know, a South Mount Hope resident, correct?
No, no. You, you do have to be an Orange County resident.
Right.
Right. That's, that's the only stipulation. Um, they're bouncing all over. There's, their, their schedule's online. I know to go to Port Jervis, the goal is to open another DMV up there very soon. Um, not the same building, but I know that's the goal. The bus has been going there. I think it was at Deer Park today, I think. And, uh, I know it was down in KJ on, uh, on Tuesday. So that being said, that's all I'm going to talk about on that. No Mo May. Thank you, Carrie, for holding that. Um, I want to thank, uh, Lois and Phil for bringing it to us, to introducing it to the board. Uh, we do have, um, flyers to hand out if anyone is interested in doing it. We did post something online about it. Again, I did post something about your backyard. As much rain as we're having, oof, the grass is growing. You can probably hear it growing. It's growing so fast out there. But, um, I believe there's certain things in there that they want you to keep at certain heights. And again, if you go to nomomay.com, I believe is what I went to, they tell you little things about it. So I would like to push it if anyone would like to put a. anyone would like to put a sign in your yard and promote it. We just asked that the front of your house looks nice from the road, so your neighbors are happy. But the purpose behind this is to obviously save the bees and to help the colony. All right, last but not least, Wenz. I know you had brought this advisory, and I'm sorry, yes, this committee information to the board. I read it. I actually talked to Mila about it. The issue that I had was probably the same issue that the previous attorney had. And I know Rory didn't see this, and the only reason I'd say he didn't see this is because after talking to them, I think they wanted to do something a little differently. We're going to have a meeting again next week, which as soon as I find out the time, Wenz, since you're going to be the liaison on this, and I know you didn't know that until just now, but since you're going to be the liaison on this, I'll let you know when it is. We'll work it around our schedule. It's going to be a little different, how they're going to introduce it to us, because we're not just going to do it as the village of Otisville. We're going to do it as a joint municipal advisory committee. Bylaws, any of that stuff, they're willing to get rid of all that. Basically, what they're looking to do is they're looking to have a committee with a liaison from the village, a liaison from the town. That would basically be an advisory committee, liaison, as far as you being liai-- if someone has questions, if a resident has questions, if there's a problem with translating something, which I actually brought to their attention, that's kind of how I got onto this. We have a resident that had a little issue, which I hope is working out. We're going to build on it a little bit, and once we build on it a little bit, we'll bring it back to this board. There's nothing for this board to vote on for it. It basically is an advisory board, kind of like what Diane does up at the prison. Members can come in, whether they be a village or town resident. The only reason that I even talked to the town about it is, my fear is this room holds not that many people. And this is the only building besides the firehouse that we have something to hold it in. So, I reached out, and I felt that since we have a large group of people that live in the village and the town, that the town can facilitate us better than the village can in this room. So, again, more to come on that. As far as all this information that was given, I'm going to let Mila talk about it, and Chris. I know they both came here to a meeting, which I was not at, but stay tuned, because I think it's going to be a great thing for both of us. But we'll have more information hopefully next meeting, all right? I'm done talking, since I just talked for 20 straight, so. Or a few, sorry.
There you have them.
Audience participation. Yes, sir. Could you please stand up and state your name?
Yeah, Mike Hornbuckle, 15 Highland Avenue, Otisville.
Yes, sir.
And first, I'll address Diane's concern. She's right. I watch a lot of the meetings at home. And even though we're a small community, sometimes you don't know who's speaking because we just, we're so close that we just know each other, and we don't identify ourselves or anything. So, I'm not going to stand in front of the camera, but at least people will know who I am. First thing is a small thing, but has anybody noticed the ruts at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Main Street? Frankie's nodding his head.
Yes.
Is there something we can do to recover from the property owner to repair that? This is, if you're not familiar with what I'm talking about, apparently one of the residents was moving out. And even though the village had put posts to keep people from parking where the Veterans Christmas Tree is, they backed in there, and there was really some pretty deep ruts, and it's going to take, you know, $100 worth of grass seed and topsoil and stuff. And if there's any way to go back against the resident or the property owner, it would be something to pursue.
Frankie's like locked in.
I was wondering if there's a camera there. I kind of think it was.
They know it was.
We know it was, and it's the person, yeah.
Yeah. Apparently, the guy is moving out, and he's, but anyway.
We'll hopefully get to it soon. It's too muddy. Do anything with.
Yeah, but I mean, should we all have to pay for one person?
Is there barriers on the other side where you can't come in off of Main?
That's right.
Off of Main.
Not off of Main, off of Highland.
You can't come in off of Highland, but you can come in off of Main.
Okay, and that's how he came in.
We didn't think anybody would.
Of course not.
There was a moving truck in there.
Yes.
Yeah, just to give you a little background, there were two vehicles that were parking there regularly, and they were, the property owner was, did get a violation from the building department. Since that went out, I have not seen the two SUVs, but I guess the moving van was what really made a mess.
Yes.
Okay.
I see the cars ain't been moved.
The second thing is, if for some reason the bypass doesn't work out, or is not adequate, Kevin and I are still open to a right-of-way coming off of 211 down into the, just keep--
I'm 100% with you, and Ryan already had that kind of, absolutely. I know that, you know that.
And then the third thing is, for Christine, has there ever been a time that the village has not paid the planning board attorney?
A time that the village has not paid the planning board? No, why?
Because I've been to multiple planning board meetings concerning 20 Highland Avenue and FOTUS, and there's been a couple of times that the attorney has said, well, you know, I'm not going to do anything until I get paid. And it's in the minutes.
The only thing we were waiting for was for the 20 Highland, their escrow was in the negative, and I was waiting for that.
Well, so how does he bill? Like, for example, the last meeting--
Per hour, hourly, yes.
But he didn't, so the meeting between FOTUS and 20 Highland, it was less than an hour. So, how do you get billed?
He does break down. He won't bill you for a full hour if he's not here for an hour.
To me, it just like, you know, his last comment was, well, this, they voted to approve both of them. He said, well, until I get paid, though, I'm not--
Well, and you were all paid up for FOTUS, but what they will do, like, he'll have to send the bills. We always do this with both the attorney and, in fact, I just spoke to the engineer, to make sure that all of, that they send us all the bills and we pay them to make, you know, because sometimes like the escrow falls short or something, and then we have to pay money. So, that's a pretty common thing.
No reflection on you, sir, but I just found it very unprofessional that he would question that he held up--
No affiliation, by the way, with Rory. Two separate companies for the record. And we pay our bills for the record.
Absolutely a pretty common, I don't know, maybe like the way that it comes across is a little, but it is a pretty common thing, yes, that whenever there's going to be some kind of a permit or something, that they will say that, yes, all fees need to be paid.
I agree. This is my personal opinion that they've been four years, that, you know, 20 Highland has been, what, eight months or a year almost or something? It just seems like it's almost not right that the people, by holding it up, can generate more income.
Well, no, no, it wouldn't be like that. No, because everything is done, and they don't have to come back. But basically, in fact, just yesterday, like, for instance, I got the one from the engineer, because I had spoken to the engineer the day before, and they sent it right out. So, they wouldn't have to come back or anything like that.
No, but I mean, in the beginning, I mean, the, for example, FOTUS, the engineer's been holding them up for four years, you know, this, that, the other thing. 20 Highland, I know that it was, you know, we come back one time, well, we want this, we want this. I just would suggest that sometime if you could just be a flat fee, they wouldn't be encouraged to run the clock.
I don't know if you'll ever find an attorney or an engineer that's going to do that, but--
That's my old man's complaint.
Thank you. Anyone else? Audience participation.
If I could just add one thing to Mike's question. As Christine said, and I don't know if it was completely clear either at the planning board meeting or in what she said, all fees have to be paid before something can be issued. So, for example, if I'm waiting for a CO, and I haven't paid all the fees yet, if the village issues me the CO, how is the village going to collect, you know, they have no, they've lost all leverage. And we've been pretty fortunate, as she said, with the engineer we're currently working with and with the attorney for the planning board, that as soon as we let them know this is, you know, needs to be done right away, they'll get the bill out to us. So, it should be taken care of pretty quickly.
It just seemed to me like he's almost was saying the bill was a bad credit risk.
No, no, it's a very common thing. I mean, if you were to go back and look at probably anything that was approved by anybody, it's not just that attorney thing. It's always the case that, you know, all fees have to be paid before it's issued, for exactly the reason that Diane said from the planning board.
For what it's worth, I join in full sentiments that it's not uncommon. I'm not just protecting my brethren as attorney, but it's, I do represent ZBAs, which operate the same way. And sometimes you misjudge the escrow that you take, and you don't want to kill someone by taking too much. You know, you're trying to look up at the hood and see what kind of work's going to be done, so you guess off of that. So, sometimes it needs to be replenished, but--
Thank you for that, and welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
I'll come up.
Thank you.
Two things. Mary Beth Rosetta, 25 Highland. I am selling, still selling lot of calendars for the ladies, Oktel Ladies Auxiliary for the month of July. I will have them with me till the end of June. You can get in touch with me to, that's how to get me monies, and what tickets do you want? Number one. Number two, the Ladies Auxiliary is doing a turkey try, May 20th, from noon to 3:30, 3:00 or 3:30. $10 entrance fee. You get three tickets for the main baskets, and then any additional, there's an additional cost for additional tickets. Get your monies in quickly, because we only have room for about 80 people in the fire hall.
Yeah, thank you.
You can also get in touch with me for that, and I can tell you how to get the monies to me.
Anyone else? Audience participation.
I just, I just, I'm sorry, Allison. I just was thinking about what we just told Mike, and I actually just do want to make it clear that it's actually village policy. It's not something that the attorney was just coming up with on his own. It is actually village policy that all of the bills have to be paid before it's issued. So, I get where you're coming from, and if it came across as abrasive from him, I'm sorry, but that is actually our policy as well, so.
It came across as abrasive, because I happened to be at that meeting also. It did come across as abrasive. I don't disagree with Mike. And listen, going forward, duly noted, and maybe some changes are coming.
It's really generally should just be part of the motion when they, right? Isn't it usually just actually part of the motion? It shouldn't even have to be sent by the attorney, but it actually is, you know, the village policy that all of the, that all of the bills have to be paid. Because we have run into something where we really have to chase a particular, a particular contractor down.
Get it out.
And luckily, we had not issued the CO, and that was, you know, where we finally got the money, because he was selling the house in, really, CEO. So, we finally got the couple thousand dollars that he owed us. But so, it does, and that's when we actually started taking escrow at that point. Because it used to be kind of like honor-honor, like we would build them as we got the bills, and that's, you know, where the attorneys and the engineers said, most municipalities take escrow, and then you don't have this problem.
I would just add this. As a resident coming to that meeting, I don't care if the attorney was paid. I care, because obviously, but I'm just saying, Mike being there, other people being there, they didn't need to hear that. And I don't disagree with you, Mike. I'm just saying, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Again, he had two board members at that meeting. I don't know, well, he found out later that there was another board member there. But again, it is what it is. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and--
Thanks for the explanation.
And just so you know too, the reason that it's village policy is because the bills, the village is being billed, really. So, if, if, you know, the contractor takes off and never pays the bill, we, all of the taxpayers do, would end up paying, would end up paying. So, that's why it's our policy. So, I should have explained that better the first time you asked the question.
The other thing, Mike, just so you don't think that the planning board is, has been insensitive. Christine mentioned that years back, we had a problem collecting the money so that we established this escrow program. It was established and set up that whenever someone came to the planning board or the zoning board, they would be being required to put up $2,500 escrow, which in most cases was far above what they needed to pay. Because of these particular two organizations being not-for-profit, the planning board has tried to be sensitive to that, and each time has taken a much smaller escrow from them. Had they taken the $2,500 upfront, that might not have happened. And I don't disagree, the attorney, you know, did not necessarily have to make that opposed statement, but that's really what it's all about. And that's it.
Okay, Allison, you're up.
Allison Miller, Town of Mount Hope. Good evening.
Good evening.
On April 3rd, a group called New York Citizens Audit spoke at the Town of Mount Hope Board Meeting about their concerns over voter fraud, and their hopes that the board would sign a resolution supporting an audit of the state voter database. My understanding is that they will also be asking this village board to sign the same resolution. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no, because I'm seriously distressed by a group that presents stories and wild claims without any actual facts, evidence, or professional analysis behind any of it. New York Citizens Audit claims to be a group of volunteers with a research team, data team, and a foil team. Their website, nyaudit.com, includes a lot of so-called data, forms to complete if you'd like to be a volunteer, and also merchandise you can buy. What it does not include are names, backgrounds, qualifications, or contact information of anyone who actually runs or funds this group. When you search for more information, what you begin to find are articles from around the state talking about their unfounded claims and illegal actions. Last November, this group served a false lawsuit to the Ulster Democratic elections, claiming the 2020 election results were invalid. It was not signed by a judge. It did not have the name of a plaintiff. It simply came from John Doe. A similar false lawsuit was served to the chair of the Orange County Democratic Committee at approximately the same time. At the April 3rd Town Board Meeting, they made the following claims. Our research team has found over a million violations of election law in this database, and each one would be considered a felony. Really? There are a million felonies that have gone unprosecuted in the state? They told a story about a Mr. B. from the Bronx, who supposedly has 20 voter ID numbers attached to him. They claimed the research team went to his address, and this person didn't exist. There was no evidence given to substantiate this claim. I could stand up here and say that there are 15 illegal aliens living in the house next door to me. They sell drugs on the back porch, and they own multiple illegal weapons. By this group's measure, you should believe me simply because I'm telling you it's true. I think we can all agree that elections must be secure, and our votes must be safeguarded. They are. After the 2020 United States Presidential Election, incumbent President Donald Trump and others filed and lost at least 63 lawsuits contesting election processes, vote counting, and the vote certification process. Nearly all the suits were dismissed or dropped due to lack of evidence. The FBI has an entire webpage devoted to election security. The Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency has an entire webpage titled "Election Security: Rumor Versus Reality." The Brennan Center for Justice, which advocates for a comprehensive plan to upgrade technology and safeguard elections, is run by an entire team of nonpartisan directors, and you can find contact information for all of them. Fox News literally just settled a defamation lawsuit of almost $800 million for wrongly suggesting that Dominion Voting Systems machines were faulty and to blame for President Trump losing the 2020 election. I sat here tonight and listened to you talk about so many important local issues. This board deserves better than to spend your time discussing and signing a resolution that has no basis in reality. Groups like New York Citizen Audit undermine democracy. They sow seeds of distrust by claiming corruption where there is none. They want us to doubt the election process, which is one of the things that makes this country great, as I'm standing here under this flag. Political posturing wastes your time and does not help residents with day-to-day issues like the bridge construction, like Veterans Park downtown. I hope you will consider all these facts when asked to put your name and your vote to this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else? Audience participation. Okay, moving on. Quarterly review assignments. Let's see, the third quarter-- Let's see, the third quarter of fiscal year 2023, December 2022 through February 2023, is due by second reading of May, which is the 18th. You guys all know when you have, okay. Nom May, I think the only thing...
This is complete, right? I'm gonna, I'm sorry, Brian.
No, that's okay.
Yes, I just want to note it on there, okay?
The memo's on your desk, and I also emailed it to you.
Nom May, the only thing I want to add about it is, if anyone's interested in doing it, we have information on our Facebook page. If you want to stop down to Village Hall during the day, you can talk to Christine and get a piece of, what I want to call laminated sheet to put in your window to show your support. And again, nommay.com, I believe there's more information on that if anyone's interested. Jim, just as a side note, nom may, I had someone from the town ask, can they participate? Who am I to tell them yes or no? I said, you're more than welcome to come down to Village Hall and get a sign, we'll give you one, but, okay, just wanted to add that in. Veterans Park Memorial Pavilion in memorial of Lou Marizio. We dealt with a couple people, dealt with Christine on this, dealt with Frank and John on this. So my, I guess I'll say this, the original plan for this was going to be to have it sometime in May, not happening. We're shooting for sometime in June, I think Christine and I talked about possibly Father's Day, not happening. Kind of looked to see when Lou's birthday would, would be, and it would happen to be July 19th. So we're going to do this on July 22nd. This will be a joint effort between the village and the town. They will be coming, they will be speaking. Again, I know Supervisor Al had a great relationship with Lou Marizio, and so did his daughter, and I'm sure all of us did. So anyone that would like to come speak, please call this office, I will get you on the list. I want to get his family there to speak, but that day, what I'd like to do is unveil the sign. And really what's taking so long and why we keep postponing it is, we're going to do a plaque with every board member's name from the village board here on it. I think it's a 10-week, approximately 10 weeks out, so that's what it pushed us to July, so. July 22nd is definitely the day. To be determined, yes, yes, sir, because it's to be determined. It's not going to interfere with little, I promise you that. Summer concert series, kind of talked about it already. Village into town joint effort. I thank the town for letting us get back in. We will be paying $1,020, which is 20% of what the budget is. If anyone didn't hear, the budget for this year is $5,100 total for the town and then obviously our part. Once our budget kicks in June 1st, we'll be ready to check for the town. And look forward to it, I hope everyone gets involved with it, we'll get flyers out again to local businesses, and we'll try to grow this bigger than it's ever been before. New business? Yeah, new business. Board resolution needed to award the bid for the Route 211 water main replacement to the low bidder, which happens to be ground zero in the amount of, let's see, $296,000. Christine, what do you have to add to that?
It's all on here, actually. It, this is, I can, I did send it all out to you in your email, but on the actual, I can read the resolution if you'd like.
I'd love to read it.
The bid analysis is in the resolution, and I obviously won't read that out loud, but I did send the bid analysis out to all of you as well. This actually came in, I think, $3,000 or less than the initial, than the bid initially was, because there was a clerical error on their, one of their contingency items. So it actually came in even less than what it was at the bidding. Whereas the village of Otisville has advertised the invitation to bid for the Route 211 watering main replacement, whereas in response to said advertisement, seven contractors purchased bid documents. Whereas four bids were submitted on April 12th, 2023 by four eligible bidders. Whereas the bid proposal of the bidders was found to be substantially complying, ground control excavating, $296,000, legacy supply, $413,450, $427,537, and jewelry excavating, Whereas the detailed evaluation of bids conducted by MHE Engineering DPC, the official engineers of the village of Otisville, resulted in the following, and that's the bid analysis sheet. Whereas upon careful examination, validation, and verification of all the eligibility, technical and financial requirements submitted by the bidder with the lowest calculated bid, its bid has been found to be responsive. Now therefore, we, the Board of Trustees of the village of Otisville, hereby resolve, one, to declare ground control excavating the lowest calculated responsive bid for the two Route 211 water main replacement for the village of Otisville, and two, to award the construction contract for the Route 211 watering replacement to ground control excavating in the amount of $296,000. Resolve at the regular meeting of the village Board of Trustees on this 4th of May, 2023. And just before you do it, just to let you know, we had $125,000 grants from CDVG, Community Development, $150,000 grants for saving to municipalities, which will cover the majority of it, and we have money in our water reserve to cover the last little bit. It could even end up being a little lower because there were some contingency items.
Okay. Can I get a motion for me to sign the contract, basically?
Well, you didn't, did pass the resolution.
And the resolution.
Has Rory had a chance to see this?
I have, yeah, thank you, yeah. I communicated that to Christine, but I didn't...
Nothing crazy?
No, no, I mean, certainly, well, I think, nothing crazy in the bid analysis sheet, which most of the information I'm working off of the resolution is fine, and ground control, I'm familiar with them as well, they did demolition and removal exiledium, which was quite a substantial project, and everything seemed to work well with that, so, not that that's part of my role here as attorney, but you see some things like that, it's, you feel like a chairman. But I'm good with the part that I'm supposed to answer as attorney, I'm good.
Okay. So we need a motion?
I move we approve the board resolution as read, and the mayor to sign the contract.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Diane. All in favor? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the bills and pay the bills, I should say?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
May I comment before that?
Sure.
Okay. At our special meeting that we held for the budget, I asked if we could spend some time, we were talking about just what Allison got up here and spoke about, the resolution that we're being requested to pass. And at that time, we said, because it was a special meeting, you know, we could not put that we would do it, not?
That's absolutely, yep.
So it's hard for me to follow Allison, because she's obviously done a whole lot more research even than I have done. I was at the town meeting when they made their presentation, and I left that meeting nothing very much against anything that they really had to say. You know, they, they come across as very convincing, but I went, I went away from it, and I told them, is you all ready, Brian? Feeling that what they were asking for was that the entire voter registration be looked at for reform. And I wasn't necessarily against that, because in this day and age, if you're mind-boggling to me, that there's no national database for voting registration. However, it wasn't until we got their material that I realized that's not what they're asking for at all. They're asking for a resolution to audit the 2022 general election. That's very different than what they, what I felt they were proposing at that town meeting, which just got me to doing some research. And I will not even imply that I did as much as Allison did, but very quickly, what you see is that they were, the organization was founded after the 2020 election, and they tried to decertify the results of that election. When they were unsuccessful, they continued to try to do public education, they were filing false lawsuits, and now they're trying to audit the 2022 general election. They have examples, statistical examples in there of things that, really, without getting into it, it's a clear case of had a lie with statistics. You know, some of them may be true, but they may not be telling the whole truth, such as, at one point, they were claiming that there were over 10,000 voters registered with the date of birth of 1/1/1850. And from what I could find, that's true, but that's because prior to 1974, birthdates were not, you didn't have to prove your birthday when you registered to vote, you just had to tell them how old you were. Then in 2007, that's when they first started computerizing voting records. That blew my mind, too, that it took till 2007 that they were doing it, but, and at that point, any unverified birthdays were being put in as 1/1/1850. That was just the placeholder that they were using. So there, there aren't really 10,000 people walking around that birthday. So that's just one example. But what I really have a problem with is the fact that the board would even consider taking the resolution that they have proposed, that they want us to pass, and passing it. Just on the second page, it says, whereas an open source audit of the New York State 2020 general election, conducted by the New York Citizens Audit, that's them, has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies and violate both federal and state law, including, and then they give a whole half-page of statistics, ending with, certification as defined by law was provably fraudulent and illegal. They're asking us to sign that, we believe that that is true. I'm sorry, I cannot get behind that, and I would like to know what the other board members feel.
I'm, I'm gonna add this. I asked Lance to come to a meeting, they requested a meeting, I asked Lance, I reached out to Lance to come down for a meeting, they supplied us with information. I have not talked to any other board member but you about this. I am not here as the mayor to convince you to vote yes or no to this. Each one of us are elected officials. We have an attorney here to advise us, which he has a copy of it, if he thinks it's a good or bad idea. They will be here next meeting, they will present what they have to present, we can talk about it after they present what they're going to. I have not made a decision myself, and I'm not going to try to convince anyone on this board to make a decision. You guys are elected officials, you make your own decisions. Thank you for putting that in, thank you Allison for bringing it to our attention. I happen to be at the board meeting, too. I happen to talk to them a couple times between now and then. Again, I would suggest this, when someone brings this to our attention, obviously, we're public officials, we have to listen to it. They are more than welcome to come to a public meeting like anyone else is, and I would ask that each one of you make your own decisions. I don't want to discuss this in detail, because I don't feel that I need to explain what my opinion is. When they come in here and they obviously ask us to vote, I will go one by one, you can tell me how you feel, and you can vote on it. I'm not disagreeing with anyone, I'm not disagreeing with the town board, what they did, that's their decision. I was there for the meetings that you were there for, too. Allison was there, too, I think for the second one, but maybe not the first one. And again, listen, each one of us have our own opinion about this. This is an outside camp, this is, people that, some of them do live in Mount Hope, I don't know that any of them live in the village, but they are more than entitled to come in here and express their opinion. So I would say this, thank you. If anyone else would like to say something, you're more than welcome to, but I would like for them to come in and present what they have to, to us. I don't know it's the same thing as the town, and I am not going to judge what they said at the town meeting for this meeting. Don't get upset. If no one else has anything to say, I would love a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Well, why don't you see a figure?
Just one thing, I have a, what I'm really concerned about, aside some of the other issues that were raised, I've never seen a thing like this, where they want us to check what we voted and then sign our name afterward. I don't understand the need for that. I mean, we've passed a lot of resolutions over the years here, and we've never had to check our vote and then sign our name afterward. And to me, it just seems like...
I think there's, actually, this just came up, a lot of municipalities' resolutions will do a roll call, as opposed to just the kind of, someone put the motion forward and then, so, and I'm, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to off of that, it's just presents differently, but yay, nay, roll call.
Well, the fact that, what I'm worried about, something's going to be collecting these things, I don't know who they are, or what they're going to do with it, and they have a nice list of everybody that voted against their resolution, to docs or to whatever else they want.
That would be in your, it would be, it would be in the minutes anyway.
It's just presented...
Yeah, I understand that, it's, it's public record, I'm not saying it's a book, but to do something like this, to have a separate sheet where you have to check your vote and then sign your name afterward, I don't, I've just never seen that before, and I'm not inclined to...
We don't have to fill that out.
I'm not forced to do that.
No one's twisting their...
No, I, I, I just, it's...
It's on that, so we don't need to...
It's procedural, it's, I, I'll, what I'm assuming, so as, as an attorney, that's a dangerous thing, but a lot of times, organizations will present a pre-drafted resolution to you in an effort to, having, ease the burden upon a municipality, so to me, I don't, I don't think it's substantive in nature, it appears to be something to package in the resolution, in the hopes that you'll adopt it as they wish for it to be presented. And a lot of municipalities use roll calls for resolutions, we were just talking to Christine about it, as we were doing, as you guys were doing the resolution, so, but beyond that, I would prefer to limit my opinion until next week as well, and see what they present is different than what I've seen, and which has been presented.
We'll listen to them next week.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut out the...
It was emailed, right? Yes.
What's that, Miss?
Yeah, you emailed that, right?
No, Christine gave us a hard copy. I emailed it and gave you a hard copy, like, thanks, a few weeks ago.
Yes.
But if you don't have it, let me know, I'll get it for you again.
The only thing I want to add, Rory, is I went to a planning board meeting, Mr. Klaus was at that planning board meeting, he is working on something, again, it's public record, he was working on something on behalf of his mother, correct me if I'm wrong. He is the liaison to the planning board meeting, I happened to be there, because it was my first planning board meeting for the village. The attorney asked that, Bob is going back next meeting, he asked that he not work two capacities. I said that I would step in and be the liaison for that committee at that point, which he's fine with, you know, obviously, as long as it's someone else, but some people on that board did not know that Bob was a trustee, so it was brought up in that meeting, and he asked me to bring it up publicly, which, no secret, I mean, what Bob's trying to do is not anything wrong.
Actually, I have to bring that up in my report.
No, 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 that's okay, that's, listen, I just thought about it when you were with Bob, myself.
Yeah, you're a resident in the community, if you're going to do something, you're going to actually wind up in front of the...
Absolutely, but I just want to put it out there, because he asked me to, and I just want to bring that up, so...
Yeah, it shouldn't be too much, it's a relatively minor hotline change.
It could be a mansion, it doesn't, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon for a trustee to wind up at a kind of, at a planning board, so...
And I don't believe it was that they didn't realize he was a trustee, they didn't realize he was not a liaison.
No, they didn't, the attorney didn't realize he was a trustee, yes.
Oh, it's the attorney, not the board members.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's it?
Yeah.
End of story. So, thank you, Bob, I'll be at the meeting myself, I will see you there, and...
As a liaison to the planning and the zoning boards, personally, and this is the way I've always operated, I don't feel it's appropriate for the board member to be at the meeting, because I feel it presents the appearance of trying to give undue influence.
Bob said nothing, I'm the one that said something at the meeting. I don't, listen, I have no problem sitting next to Bob, they all know where we're at, and I don't know that they're making a decision, he decided to bring some paperwork to them, but if they're going to make a decision, I have no problem asking Bob to step out for a little bit. I'm not kicking you out of the building, by the way, but, you know, you can go in the other office, that's all, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:29?
Sure.
Thank you, second.
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.